Monday, July 8th, City Council Manager Workshop. Ms. Sint, since you are here, would you please do the roll call for us?
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
Councilmember Juneman.
Here.
Councilmember Neblet.
Present.
Mayor Abrams.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Neblet, seconded by Juneman, a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have no unfinished business tonight. We have three new business items: presentation concerning the Administration Department, Information Technology Department, and then a reasonable accommodation ordinance. So let's start with the Administration presentation. Okay. Ms. Coleman and Mr. Funk are going to be at the podium for us. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, Mike and I are going to give you a brief interview with Mr. Funk.
Microphone.
We'll get the microphone on.
I thought Mike was supposed to do that for you. What's the deal here?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening. Tonight, you're going to hear from a couple of our departments. First one being Administration. And Mr. Funk and I will kind of tag-team on this presentation tonight. First of all, our department, the Administration Department, has four divisions. They are Administration, Human Resources, Communications, which you've already heard from, and City Clerk. So here, on this slide, is just the org chart. You can see that City Manager is at top. We have the Assistant Manager, Director of Human Resources, with Communications and Administrative Services and Performance Measurement Coordinator are directly under me. Legal is under me, but actually, legal also takes their cues from the council as well. And then we have, Mr. Funk is supervising HR, our Human Resources Division, and the City Clerk Division. And that happened about two years ago. That was one of our efficiencies. When our City Clerk, Karen Haig, retired, we decided that we would restructure. And it was at that time that Mr. Funk took over the supervision of that department. Just to share with you our mission statement, each of the departments has one. Ours is to provide leadership to effectively implement the Maplewood City Council's policy directions for efficient public services delivery. Short and sweet. Next up is what we do. This has a lot of writing on here, which I know is not typically what you want on a slide, but we thought we would put them all in one place. So what do we do? We implement administrative city policies that come from the city council typically. We provide executive leadership. As most of you have heard from Mike and I in the past, our mission, when we both came to the city, was to create a high-performing organization. And how do we get from good to great? That's kind of been, Mike and I, our mission for quite some time, since we started working together back in 2015. We also believe in process improvement, and we are constantly looking, not only in our department, but in other departments, for ways to do things more streamlined, better, coordinate things together. We have been really working hard at cross, working cross-department boundaries and trying to break down silos and work together better. We also want to work on our culture, and we are working on becoming a strengths-based organization. And I can tell you that our employees have really embraced that concept. We have a couple of training, right now, it's actually part of our onboarding. When we have new employees, they take the strengths assessment. And then as soon as we get sort of 15 to 20 people, I have a three-hour workshop with them to go over, helping them understand their strengths better and what that means to our organization. We also do some other things. We have some engagement teams that work on strengths. One of the things that we're having, next week, we're having a lunch and learn. It'll be our second one. We have 50 people signed up to attend our lunch and learn. So that in itself tells you that people are interested in it. And it's all departments, and it's public safety, which, you know, there was a time public safety would not come into a room where management was and be involved. And so we're really so happy to see that people are embracing that. So we're really happy about that. And staff engagement, we're doing that on all different levels, and you've heard about most of them, but we have our, we help support the National Night Out and our WOW events, but we also do some things internally. We have employee picnics, employee appreciation. We have a, three times a year, we have a Leadership Book Club, where we get together and discuss a management or leadership book. So we really believe that we are providing leadership to our organization, and we are heading in the direction of becoming a highly performing organization. We also manage fiscal resources, and we do the lead on our strategic priorities and performance measurement. And we didn't have Lois come tonight to talk about that, because you got a lot of that at our retreat earlier, a couple months ago. We have legal services, which are our city attorneys. We have a prosecuting attorney and a civil attorney. Mr. Beatty is our civil attorney, and he is here this evening or will be with us shortly. We also do citizen outreach. We do communications and social media, which you heard from, from Mr. Sheeran a couple weeks ago. Human resources. We manage our workforce. We train our workforce. And Mr. Funk is generally in charge of that. And then we have elections, which Ms. Sint is responsible for. And that takes quite a bit of work, especially next year, when we have a national election. That's always crazy. So I'll tell you a little bit more about the impact to the budget with our elections. We process passports. We do business licensing, and we do data management and record retention, which is a pretty hefty amount of work. The amount of data that we are required to maintain is staggering at times. I'm going to let Mike talk about our shared, there we go. There we go. Our shared values and work culture, and then I'll step back in after a couple of slides.
Sure. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Shared values and workplace culture. So note, the picture up there is, no, we're not preparing for a Vikings game. Well, maybe we are a little bit. As Ms. Coleman talked about, really engaging our staff. And so I think that, almost that picture speaks a lot about our workplace culture. We not only have some fun with our staff, but we do it in a way that's productive and team-building. This is a photo from one of our, as Ms. Coleman mentioned, from our recent picnics. And part of that shared values and workplace culture is that employee engagement. I know we speak to it a lot, but it's really important for us that we build the right culture. And so these items that you see up on the slide, we build that into our annual performance reviews. And so that's new for us as well. And so from the day we start a new employee here at the city, we try to incorporate these values into what we are as a city. So even, as I mentioned, we're going to show you a new onboarding video here in a second, but part of what we want to do as an organization is talk about employee engagement, wellness, and how important it is for the city. I'll speak to that here in a second, but our wellness participation has been instrumental in what we think is keeping our insurance premiums down. Another aspect of that is being adaptive and innovative. And those really go hand-in-hand, as us as an organization. And it really, I think, this speaks to your leadership as well, in that we're progressive. We want to make sure that we're, we have the right mechanisms in place, that if employees, whether it's department heads or frontline staff, have the ability to come forward with ideas. And we really, really want to encourage that. Stewardship is, obviously speaks for itself, and because as a city, we know our resources are limited. And so we try to maximize what we do here through efficiencies and the best uses of our funds, so our taxpayers feel they're getting the best bang for their dollar. Customer service, again, also speaks for itself. I know in our recent survey here, almost a year and a half ago, residents rated city staff as having very good customer service. It's important to us, so that we are responsive to those calls, whether they come to you as the council, or whether they come to us through our service counter or directly to our departments. We want to make sure that our customers, our residents, are top priority. And then last, I know we talk a lot about our strategic plan, but that's really what this speaks to, is our performance measurement and outcome-focused teamwork. And really, it is a team atmosphere here at the city. We really preach building or tearing down the silos and working together to achieve everything that you're laying out for us. As noted, some of the things, when we put this slide together, it was actually fun to put together, because we brought our team together and we talked about, what are some of these things this last year we can pat ourselves on the back a little bit, some of those successes? But most importantly, what are some of the efficiencies that we found in our operations? I'll try to touch base on all of these, but I also know our time is somewhat limited, so I'll go as quick as I can. So we improved our strategic plan. And how we did that is through our Invisio reporting. Your quarterly report's coming to you, I believe, at your next council meeting, so you'll see our strategic plan. How that's made us more efficient is because now we're becoming more of a data-driven organization. Prior, we used to have those goals listed. And so a lot of times, when those goals were listed, they were just words describing how we might have improved something. With the strategic plan and how we approach our everyday work is using the data, using charts, using graphs, using information that's available to us, so we can make the best decisions, especially for the city and for our residents. The next two, again, speak to wellness. Again, we have very high wellness participation. To us, that's significant, because as you get into your budget, or you are into your budget for 2020, but as you start making decisions about the levy, what's important to note here is that while we have general wage adjustments for our staff in our contract negotiations, we have 0% health insurance premiums for the city. That is extremely significant, in that you, as a city council, don't have to worry this year about budget increases for health insurance premiums. Not many cities can say that. In fact, historically, if I were to throw a chart up there for you, we've had a 3% levy, excuse me, a 3% increase in our health insurance premiums over the last four years. We're going out for bids, as you know, and we're giving a little bit of word that that, at least if not the same, may be a little bit of reduction. So we can't say enough about our wellness program and the work that Lindsay Herzog does for us in that respect. The Moore Team and the job fair that we did this last year, we thought that was a huge success in our outreach programming and how we're connecting with the community. I do want to, not to really jump around too much, but our City Hall remodel is significant. Ms. Sint has talked about in our staff meeting just how we've made some improvements upfront with our workflow. It's amazing, just in the day-to-day operations, and the amount of contact that we have with citizens, just resituating death. And our operations where our staff can interface with customers has made a significant impact on how we, again, can provide the best customer service that we can. Ordinance cleanup's been significant, and I know you're talking about some of those now with some ordinances. That's been important. I'd be remiss in not saying something about HR-related with our recruitments. As you see up on the screen, we do spend some time with our recruitment efforts. And so we certainly stay busy recruiting with some of our full-time turnover that we've had, even though our turnover rate's been really good, at less than 5%. Our part-time takes some time, as well, as we recruit for a lot of our part-time positions. Employee engagement, Ms. Coleman already spoke of. And then there's the onboarding process. It's been, again, from my perspective in HR, a really new thing this year for us. We use NeoGov as our HR platform. That is kind of our life cycle of employees. So we start with our software platform from the day someone applies for a job here till the time they offboard with us. And one of the components that we added this last year was called onboarding. So we've completely integrated our onboarding process to be paperless. And we're going to show you here a project that was put together by significant help with our IT department. And so when a new employee comes to the city, we want to make sure we're telling our story to them. Because as a new employee, it can be intimidating coming to a new workplace, and you're hoping that, that when you accept employment here, you've made the right decision. So we're making sure that when employees do come here, we're giving them all the comforts that they've, they're coming to a great workplace. So with that, I'd like to really just kind of show off our video. I think that's our next slide here, and if the technology works right. This is what employees see.
We're all the face of the city of Maplewood.
We're here to serve our residents, and I guess I enjoy that aspect of it.
It's just truly amazing how many good folks are within our community.
Oh, look at you. You're getting the helmet on, huh?
I think community engagement is one of the most important things that you're going to do. You need to know the residents that you're serving. You need to know the customers that you have, and it's really only going to make you better if you can relate to them.
I'm Sean Finwall. I am the environmental planner with the city of Maplewood.
My name is Napre Lengame. I work in the engineering department.
I'm Commander Mike Shorty.
I'm Megan Danazak. Currently, I'm the administrative office supervisor in Public Works.
Get involved with other things outside of your department, outside of your day-to-day stuff, like this video, for example, or...
Welcome to the first recycling feud!
Trying to have fun here, because a lot of us do actually have fun at our jobs.
It's valuable that we see each other and ourselves as a team.
It might be intimidating at first, but if you see somebody new, always make sure that you introduce yourself, because somewhere down the line, you're going to cross paths.
It won't take you long to understand there are a lot of great people here, with a lot of positive attitudes, and are willing to be helpful and are also very friendly.
Don't be afraid to ask for help.
Don't hesitate to go to IT. Don't hesitate to call whoever can help you with a problem.
If you have any bird questions, I'm a bird nerd.
My name is Neil Brenneman with the Maplewood Parks and Recreation Department.
My name is Lou Cortese, and I'm in the Public Works Department.
My name is Sandra Witt. I work at the Deputy Registtor's Office.
My name's Connie Herr, and I'm a seasonal naturalist.
My name is Steve Lukin, and I'm the Maplewood Fire Chief.
It's just nice to know that somebody else knows your name, and that really means a lot.
Raise a concern, offer a solution, if people are willing to hear that.
Take advantage of everything that comes your way, whether it's through training, whether it's through opportunities and promotion, whether it's in opportunities for trying different benefits.
It's great to work in a place that allows you to, you know, take walks around the pond if you need to, go work out at the Y.
It's really guided me in becoming a healthier person.
It shows that, you know, you're in a place that cares about the employees that work for them and the jobs that they do.
It's great to work in a place where it's so valued. You know, not only is it physical, but it's the mental aspect of it, financial.
I'm Melinda Coleman, and I'm the City Manager of Maplewood, and I love my job. I'd like to welcome you to our team and tell you a little bit about the culture of Maplewood.
Hello, welcome to Maplewood. What can I do for you?
Employees are friendly and fun.
Sure.
And we have an absolutely terrific wellness program. On-the-job training and lifelong learning is encouraged for all of our employees. We're a strength-strong organization. What that means is that we believe in everybody's unique talents and strengths, and we work together every day to bring out the best in all of us. Thanks for joining our team. I look forward to getting to know you better, and I wish you every success in your new
Very nice. Very nice.
Well, thanks for watching along with us. So that is, like I mentioned, a video that we show our new employees. I didn't put up on the overhead for you, like, what our homepage or what a screenshot looks like for a new employee, but it's, again, something we're really proud of. So when we're, again, bringing on new staff, we want to give them a sense that this is a great choice for them. This is a great workplace, because it is a great workplace, and we're becoming a workplace of choice, and that's by design. So with that, not only is all this good stuff fun and exciting, but it doesn't go without some challenges. So Ms. Coleman's going to speak to some challenges.
Thanks, Mike. And I would just like to give Mike credit for the onboarding software. He worked really hard to make sure that we got that done, and also the communications team who did the video. It was, it was fun doing it, and I think it really does help give a sense of who we are to our new employees. So I appreciate that. Some of the challenges that we have been working on is our workforce diversity. I think when I first became the City Manager, I believe our non-white population was about 9% of our workforce, and it is now about 12%. So we are making inroads. It's slow. But I do have to give a lot of credit to our Public Safety Director for really working hard at attracting non-traditional applicants and creating a more diverse workforce and public safety. And all of us share that goal whenever we have a position that comes open. One of the things that does concern us greatly is that 50% of our supervisors are retirement-eligible in the next five years. So what that means is we have to work really hard on succession planning. We have to make sure that we have people on the bench that can move up and take positions for the folks that are leaving. We think about that a lot, about how do we prepare others to take, take our chairs when we leave. Another challenge, as I mentioned before, will be the 2020 presidential primary. That's new to us. It will be, I think, a really busy year for our election staff, and there will be some costs associated with that, which I'll talk about at one of the next slides here. One of the other challenges that we have is our high customer volume. And if you come to City Hall on any day, you will see what the front counter looks like. It's crazy. We are one of the busiest deputy registrars in the state, and that is, you can see that. Our staff, I can't believe they keep up as well as they do, because they're really stretched. We do passports. We do business licensing. We do data requests. We have almost a full-time position working on data practice requests. We have the front desk, who also addresses police issues. So if people come in and they want to get a police report, that person will get that over to the police department. So they handle a lot of different things. The people who work at the front desk are the front face of our organization. It's usually the first person they come in contact with when they come here. So it's really important that we have good, well-trained people in that chair, and we do. Christine does an excellent job of knowing about everything. And it seems kind of crazy, but they're the person who actually has to know about everything, or at least how to direct people, direct traffic. So we do cross-training in that position, and we're doing a lot of, I give Andrea and the folks and the deputy registrar a lot of credit for the cross-training that they do, so that they can always be ready to, if there's unplanned absences or whatever, someone else can step in and do the job. So we, that's challenging, because what happens is we're covering, and we have so much high customer volume, it's hard to get those people to go to training sessions. So we really work hard at making sure they get included in that. And then document management, talked about that a little bit before. One of the things that we're working on and should be rolling out in the next couple months is DocuSign, where the mayor and myself and all the people who have to sign documents will be able to do it over the computer, which will also help us streamline how they get filed. So it's just a better way, a more efficient way to take care of the documents that we have to manage. I also talked about record retention. Mr. Folds can tell you, we're required to save almost everything. And so that's kind of a head spinner when you look at your emails, and I have to say that at least twice a week, I get the, "Your mailbox is full, you better do something." And so we have a lot of emails and a lot of things that come in, and so it is really a challenge to figure out that. Mike talked about our new software that we're using, Invisio, with our strategic plan. So we're really working hard at document management, but it takes time to get all those things in place. Also, just want to talk a little bit about the 2020 budget. I asked all the staff who had a budget increase this year to put in their presentations why they were experiencing an increase. For us, we're experiencing a 7% increase in our budget, and that primarily relates to wage and salary adjustments for our union and non-union employees. Those 3% COLAs, or cost of living or wage adjustments, were the major reason. We also have to increase our attorney services budget, and that's primarily just not understanding all of the different issues that would come up when we put Mr. Beatty on a contract. But we have a, we have a pretty big workload, and what we found is that we were budgeting about $10,000 a month for him, and it's going more around $12,000 a month is what we're spending. And you can just see, we have all the real estate transactions we're working on. We have a lot of different things going on that we need an attorney to help us with. Tonight, we just had Mr. Beatty help us talk about the EDA and what that means. So he's doing a lot of different things for us, and we really appreciate the staff at Kennedy and Gray, and they're doing a great job. 2020 elections are going to be challenging, not only just organizationally and how we get that done, but it does have a big cost to our budget. Our budget will be $119,000 for the budget next year. That includes $93,000 of just staff costs, overtime, and the people that we bring in, the election judges. You know, when you have to staff absentee balloting and walk-in balloting, all of that adds up. On an off-year, the good news is, on an off-year, it's $30,000. So those explain why our budget is going up, the 7% in 2020. Mike, you're up again on goals. Do you want to cover goals? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Again, this is the last slide before we get to some questions. So some goals, and you'll see up on the slide, this does relatively align with some of the challenges that Ms. Coleman and I have touched on. One of those is, however, the workers' comp mod factor. And you might ask, what's a mod factor? It's a big formula calculation by the League of Minnesota Cities. They carry our insurance. We have had, unfortunately, higher-than-usual workplace incidents, accidents, that have resulted in lost time or wages. And so as a result of that, I was just getting the final numbers here from Ms. Paul Seth, our finance director, that's had a fiscal impact to the city. In 2019, that added about $100,000 in additional premiums to the city, and next year, in 2020, it's also adding approximately $90,000 to $100,000 as well. So we have a goal with our safety committee to really study and analyze what we can do here in the workplace to really improve our situation. I mentioned NeoGov, or we both have mentioned NeoGov a number of times. You just saw the onboarding video. Kind of another component of that is offboarding. So when an employee leaves the city, how we streamline that whole, that whole process. Currently, it's all a lot of paper forms and checkboxes, so we're looking to streamline that in our offboarding process. The other component there is called LEARN. It was mentioned that we recognize in our succession planning that 50% of our supervisors will be eligible for retirement, so we need to plan for that. Part of that, planning for that, is having development plans and being able to track employee progress regarding their development to be that next-generation leader. So we're looking at implementing a piece of that. Not only will LEARN do that, but there's other pieces of it, but understanding that employee development is critical. Excel implementation, this speaks to Ms. Sint and the business licensing folks in the City Clerk's office. They've started the implementation. We're looking, getting that completed here this year. It's been a big project, because we interface here down in our offices with the folks up on the Hill or 1902, and just all the inspections that take place. So we're really getting that integrated here and hope to have that completed. The last, the next couple items there is that category called employee enrichment. And again, speaking to, you probably hear a focus from us, and we're speaking to our value in our staff and how much our employees mean to the organization. So we're looking at having continued supervisor training. We're having a session coming up this, actually, this next week on that front. We also are starting a brand-new program called Maplewood U. I know it's a fun, fun kind of thing that we've been, that we have here at Maplewood. We have what's called going to be our LEAD program, which is a development program for that next-generation leader. So we're looking at having employees enroll in a program that'll be internally based and internally programmed on how we can, again, develop our staff. Again, spoke enough probably already on strengths, but we're certainly continuing with our strengths-based processes and how we use strengths in our organization. And then certainly, the other piece that's been important for our employees is that further community engagement. We have a goal this year that 80% of our employees participate in a community event. We're already getting close to 50% of our employees being involved to this point in the year, so we're, I think we'll have no problem reaching that target, but it's been exciting to see our employees getting more involved in the community. And then second-to-last year is DocuSign, and Ms. Coleman spoke of the record management and how this will become a great tool for us to better enhance our internal management of all the records that we have to keep here at City Hall. And then last, more from an HR perspective, is completion of our personnel policy, another kind of internal process for us, but it is a, almost a nine-year-old document. So our personnel policies have not been updated since 2010, I believe it was, '09 or '10. And so we're going through, I wouldn't call a complete overhaul, but certainly updating a lot of components to that as well. It's been a pretty big undertaking for us. So with that, that's some of our major goals for this upcoming year. And with that, I'll turn over to Ms. Coleman and to you, Madam Mayor, for any questions.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Councilmember Knutson.
When I was looking at the org chart, I was wondering, where do all the other departments report? Through you, Melinda, or?
All of the other departments report through their department head, and then the department heads report to me.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Neblet.
Wow. I want to work here. [laughing]. You do?
Yes. Oh, yeah. This is really encouraging, and seriously, I say it jokingly, but you guys are doing good stuff. And keep up the good work.
Thanks. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next department presentation is information technology with Mr. Folds.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present briefly an overview on the IT department. Just a brief overview on our department, we exist to support the technology needs of city employees. The department ensures that core applications and the systems used by staff are functioning as expected at all times. Our mission statement is probably almost as short as HR's, but to provide the most effective IT services and support possible to the city of Maplewood, staff, and citizens. To do that, we have four full-time employees. We have myself, the IT director. We have Nick Franslin, who's our systems and network engineer. We have Michael Renner, who's our public safety IT technician. He works predominantly with the police and fire departments. And then we have Alex Guerensen, who is our IT technician. So what do we do? A lot of, a large variety of things, trying to group them into three areas. Number one, we ensure infrastructure stability. And so when we talk about infrastructure, we're talking about workstations, we're talking about the network, our fiber optics that we have that connect all of our remote sites to the data center here and all the servers that operate in it, the applications that work on those servers. So ensuring that those have high availability to staff. Inevitably, not, something will break sometimes, and so when they do, we provide technical assistance to our staff. We do that through managing our help desk, and so staff has the ability to submit tickets to us. We respond accordingly as needed. We do support the help desk with a 24/7/365 on-call schedule, and so our staff rotates, our force staff rotate through our weekly on-call schedule. The other role, lastly, that we provide is to kind of promote technology within the department. So I meet regularly with a number of departments. We'll be all departments by the end of '19 to discuss maybe some pain points that they're having in their departments, some ideas that maybe their staff has seen in some of their peers in other cities. We talk through how to better use technology within the department. I've also worked with my other three staff to try and, I guess, enlist them, and as they see things, they're the boots on the ground, especially Alex and Mike, fixing some of these tickets, to have them see through the lens of maybe better ways to do some of the work that our different departments are doing. So we'll proactively maybe meet with staff to make suggestions as well. Some of the successes over the last year, as you know, we've issued a franchise agreement with Comcast, and we're excited to move on from that.
Yes.
The Wakefield Park building, while we did not necessarily manage the actual construction of the building, we had a number of pieces to that puzzle, whether it's running all of our low-voltage cableings so that we have Wi-Fi, we have our door access systems, our security cameras, our AV out there. So we had a number of pieces of that puzzle, and the fact that we're now using that building, we're pretty excited about. The internet migration, Mr. Funk spoke to already this evening. We had IT who was involved with the city manager's office and communications in ensuring that all of the tools that were in part of the old site migrated over to the new. Help desk responsiveness, this is one item that I think I'm probably one of the most proud about. We have, so that helped us, that we talked about, the service, the means for, I guess, our employees to request service. We commit to one of the metrics that we measure ourselves by, or how often we're meeting our commitments to staff. And so we measure that through our service level agreements, our SLAs. So when someone puts in a low ticket, you know, we commit to fixing that within five days. An emergency, we commit to four hours. Our goal for the year is 90%, so meeting our commitments 90% of the time. And over the last year, we were able to, we were at 90, just over 93% meeting that. So we're very proud. It hasn't always been that way over the years, and so we're very proud to be able to provide that service to staff. Two last things, and we're talking more on the efficiency side of things. Our PC rollouts, how we roll out our computers, we roll out about 35 to 45 computers a year, so not a lot, but historically, it's taken us maybe around eight hours to get a PC in and out the door. So it's somewhat of a manual task in that you're clicking on buttons, the next window, finish, open up the next application to install it. Alex Guerensen has worked over the last six months to automate almost that whole entire process. And so he has a knack for writing code, and so he's written a number of scripts to essentially automate the whole process of rolling out these computers. And so what, historically, earlier this year, took us eight to 10 hours, he can now get a computer out the door in 30 to 60 minutes. So what it means for us as a department, when we roll out those new ones, we're that much more efficient, and we can get it out and move on to other things. What it means for staff members is when we do have that inevitable hard drive failure where an employee's computer is down, many times we can get them either a new one or replace that one that was down in 30 to 60 minutes versus an employee being down for an entire day. And so it allows them to get back to the work that they're trying to do. So we're very proud of that. Also, our Laserfish forms, you've heard me talk about Laserfish before, City Manager Coleman just mentioned it also. It's been our application that we use to manage our documents for many, many years, but it's usually been scanned documents, scans of paper documents that are stored there. Two years ago, we purchased kind of an add-on called Forms, which allows us to create, you think of a fillable PDF, if you will. But it doesn't just stop there. We can create a form and then route that form through some pretty complicated workflows, as complicated as we want to get. When Mr. Funk talks about the onboarding process and some of the wage forms that new employees fill out, that's using Laserfish forms. They don't fill out that paper sheet anymore, that walk it over to finance, who pulls their information off of it, then walks it to HR. That's all routed electronically, and then when everything is completed, gets emailed back to maybe the submitter, gets filed within Laserfish. And so now, over the last year, we've taken 30 forms, paper forms, and all the processes that come with that, and have moved it to electronic versions of it. And so every department's using it, everyone from the police department with their FTO process to our wellness committee is using it to track participation. We're very proud of that. It's much more efficient. I keep doing that. Challenges, we don't have any, I guess I would say, any challenges out of the norm, but a couple of things that are top of mind for us are ensuring knowledge continuity within the department, because we do have a small group of four, and we are building some new customized solutions. We want to make sure that we're documenting all of that, and so that in the event that we do have someone leave employment or on an extended absence, that we have the means to support the applications that we've now put into place. We do that through, we've built a, essentially a Wiki site on our SharePoint Online, our internet site, where we have hundreds upon hundreds of pages for each application, for each process, documenting what was done, why it was done, so that we can all support that in the future. Also, cross-training, we meet weekly with our staff, and part of that staff meeting is to talk about some of these applications, what we're working on, and we also try and job shadow as much as possible, so if this time permits. Security is the other piece that I wanted to touch on. Historically, we've been, we've focused on, and I believe have done a good job about ensuring that the technical side of our security is in place, or our firewalls, our intrusion detection, our endpoint security, so our antivirus on our workstations are all in place and functioning correctly. We want to take that step forward now, and we have started that in '19, to really train our users on how to be frontline security experts also, or at least to know what to look for on what is a valid email, what isn't, what is a valid website, what isn't, so that we don't have any issues from inside. And so we've started training staff already. Our goal is to put them through a training program that we've purchased through a company called Nobi4. All staff through it by the end of 2019. Lastly, testing. We've been working with actually our auditors and also a couple outside firms, taking in proposals to perform some penetration testing and just secure, testing against our network, essentially, which would leave us, which would give us a report of what we're doing well, areas where we can improve on, and also a score. And so we'd be able to kind of set a benchmark for ourselves for this year for network security and build upon that in future years. Budget considerations, nothing too crazy here. We do see an increase from 2019, but of 4.3%. The bulk of that is in wage and salary adjustments. We do see a small increase in fees for service. That's just passed through funds from a couple of new modules. You talk about the NeoGov LEARN, that's a new budgeted item for us, and that's what you see in fees for service. Goals, we want to continue to improve upon that help desk responsiveness, and so we're happy with where we're at right now, but part of what I've been talking about with staff is how to continue to challenge them in that, and what, where's the area improvement where our users would see the most impact. And so we're looking at possibly maybe increasing that percentage of time that we commit to meeting our SLAs, or possibly shrinking the time limit that we commit to resolving tickets in. So maybe instead of five days, we commit to having it done in three days. And so we're working through that with staff now. We want to continue to learn as much as we can about the applications that we're currently using, so we can make sure that we're using them as effectively as possible. Continue to work with staff on that automation of routine processes. Anytime we look at a paper form and we're filling it out, is this something that we can digitize and use in Laserfish forms? Want to continue to use mobile technologies, extend those resources out into the field with staff. Very excited to work with our new building official. He's pretty excited and comes with a lot of experience on mobile technologies. When finished, as Mr. Funk spoke to also, that Excel implementation, so the planning and permitting and licensing in '19, and then begin the process for a 2020 implementation of our new finance suite. With that, Mayor and Council, lots of things. We'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. City Manager Coleman has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to point out when Mr. Folds was talking about the PC, the new PC rollouts, we also give our old computers to an organization called PCs for People, and we've been doing that for probably four years, five years.
Yeah, maybe.
And the really great thing that I love about that is that those computers are repurposed, and they're given to low-income families, and many of them reside in Maplewood. And we get a typical report from them about how many, but it's been a significant number, 30 to 40 families a year. So we're really excited that we're able to contribute to that organization. It's a great, it's a great thing to give back to our community.
As a matter of fact, Mayor and Council, we're working with Mr. Sheeran in the Communications Department for a story that I believe he's planning on running in September to highlight that partnership and some of the resources that are available to our citizens also.
That's a great partnership. I'm really happy to hear about that. I have a question, Mr. Folds, and it's based on a recent news article. I think it was the city of, was it Cincinnati, where their, their technology was held hostage? And they wound up, I believe, the last report that I saw was that they were considering paying a ransom. And certainly, it's something that all cities need to be concerned about, and I know from Councilmember Juneman and I, meeting with the auditor about some of the things that they're doing to help our city with, with technology, but maybe if you could address that specifically, I think our residents would be happy to hear about that, too.
Sure. There's, Mayor and Council, there's certainly a number of facets to that, but it's certainly something we're aware of. On one hand, on the technical side of things, it's ensuring that, when we talk about those firewalls, those intrusion detections are all in place. A lot of that, though, comes from that email phishing, that attachment that gets sent that somebody clicks on and has, runs rampant once it's withinside, once it's beyond the moat, if you will, in that castle. We have a number of protections in place in that we restrict applications or files from running in a number of locations on that local computer. And so we're more restrictive, I think, than what we have certainly ever been in the past. It's frustrating somewhat for users because they can't install anything, and they can't run anything. It's a little bit more time-intensive from our point of support, but we've locked down not just the outer barrier, but also those workstations internally as well, so that even if something were received, more than likely, it's not going to be able to be ran. We also use our antivirus that we use, doesn't work off of, I'm trying to explain, doesn't work off of a set of definitions that need to be updated periodically. And so the risk in that is that if a brand-new virus or vulnerability comes out and those definitions don't know about it yet, then you're susceptible to it. Ours works off of the actions that it's trying to take, and so if a particular file on my computer or executable is trying to encrypt all of my files and lock them down, our application should more than likely say, whoa, 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 why are you doing that? That's not what we expected you to be doing, and we'll lock it down before it ever gets to that point. On top of that, we've been working with Finance Director Paul Seth on some of the coverages, should we need them, in the event that we do have some type of breach. And we do have some coverage from the league, should we need it, and there are also other coverages that we were discussing, looking at, should the event ever come where something is held hostage and we would need to respond to it.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Folds. I'm glad you are focusing on the training piece of it, because by far, the weakest link in technology are the people. I was just having dinner with some folks the other night, and one of the folks I was with was saying that they had gotten an email from a colleague asking for their password for the system, and so that person turned it over to their IT department and, and just said, I thought you should see this, but I can't believe anybody would, you know, they think that this would actually work. And the IT person was like, well, 57 of your colleagues sent their password over to this person. So, you know, it's, but they, they're getting good at it. So it's, you know, that people part of it is definitely the weakest spot. You know, I look at IT as being kind of a trifecta, right, of, of infrastructure, security, and strategy and information. And I feel like you've had your hands full with the first two for quite a while of keeping our infrastructure solid, up-to-date, while running, and, and making sure everything's locked down and secure. And I think you've done a fantastic job with both of those things, and it's probably been more of, more of a job than we've had people for, just for those two pieces, and probably will continue that way. But I do think that for all of our department heads, starting to think about how do we leverage the information we have, cross-reference the information we have, and, and really use that to serve our residents more effectively is sort of the next step, in my mind. You know, to be able to build internal kind of customer profiles where we know, hey, this person has this permit, and they've participated in this Parks and Rec program, and they've filed, you know, this information, et cetera, so that we can start to work with our residents as a whole person and their whole experience, because they don't look at their interactions with separate parts of the city as separate things, right? And I really think it'll be interesting to see how we might start to evolve in that direction, whether it's through software, processes, or a combination of the two, more likely, to see how that goes. So be happy to talk with you and nerd out on that at another time, not here, but, you know, I do.
Nerd out?
Nerd out.
Okay. That's not going to be something I'm going to say, but it works when you say it.
Yeah, well, it's one nerd to another of speaking our language.
Nerd out.
You know, it's, anyway, I think there's some really interesting opportunities for us down the road that would help enable a lot of things across the city. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else, councilmembers? Can I, one final thing. I did notice, and it's been a little while now, and I never, I haven't run into you to ask you about it, but when we get emails, we now have that, that notice that they are, the email is coming from an external source. Is that part of your whole safety, security kind of plan?
It is, Mayor and Council, yes. It's, as we continue to get some phishing attempts and now some very convincing spear phishing attempts, you know, very specific ones that look like they're coming from you, requesting Finance Director Paul Seth to wire money here, there, anywhere. A very easy thing that we did was just add that header to just distinguish to the user, to the recipient, that this message originated outside our organization. Yes.
Thank you. I think that that's a really good idea. I pay attention to that. Thank you very much. Thank you. Excellent report. And our final presentation tonight under new business is concerning reasonable accommodation ordinance. And Mr. Thompson, this is your area.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So the City Attorney's Office and the city staff have drafted an ordinance that's before you tonight and is also scheduled for your regular meeting to essentially codify kind of a process for addressing reasonable accommodation requests under the federal law. And certainly Mr. Beatty can talk more specific of their questions about the Fair Housing Act and what reasonable accommodation actually is. But in short, it's a means for the city to process requests related to fair housing and reasonable accommodation for providing a flexibility in complying with the city code. And that could potentially allow the city to modify or, or change some city requirements specific to a request that's provided to the city and are necessary for kind of eliminating barriers for, for providing housing for people that have a federally recognized disability. There's, they're pretty, what we've experienced in the past and what I've experienced in other places, there's only a couple of like regular examples. And so one would be like the construction of an accessible ramp to access a housing structure, either a house or an apartment building. And for some reason, that ramp can't comply with a zoning regulation, a setback, or some other type of regulation we have in place, and there's no other way to construct the accessible ramp to comply with our requirements. Or secondly, what we have seen a couple times here in Maplewood is sober living residences. And these are structures in which people that have chemical, depend chemical or substance abuse past, where they're, they're living in a residence, but they're not providing, there are no services provided. It's just really a residential facility to which those people live, but they do exceed our maximum occupancy for unrelated people under our zoning code. So our zoning ordinance allows for no more than five unrelated people to live together, but oftentimes those sober living residences do exceed that. And so actually, in the city's past, we've issued at a staff level, two approvals for sober living residences, one under a lodging license and a second under a, kind of a separate agreement that we administered with the, the City Attorney's Office to approve those sober living residents, again, so that we're complying with the federal law. So what the draft ordinance before you tonight largely does is to just give us a kind of a straightforward and defined process for the city to, to follow when we receive these reasonable accommodation requests. So what would happen, it's, we would, they would, the applicant would need to submit an application to the city. It would be quite simple. They would just need to outline what the reasonable accommodation that is being requested and why it's, and why it's necessary. And then that application would be reviewed against the, the standards that are outlined in that ordinance. And if it meets those standards, the city would then issue that license, and it would be a limited license to that property owner. Unlike a conditional use permit or other land use approval, it doesn't run with the property and it's not good for future owners. It's limited to that particular circumstance for which it's granted. There would be a slight fee, just a modest fee that the city could charge just to, to cover any sort of processing costs that we have, but we would set that as part of our fee schedule to be, again, modest. We're bringing this in the workshop just to get some discussion from the council. We think there are three options for kind of administering this, this reasonable accommodation process. We identified kind of three options. One is for these requests to come to the council, and the council can weigh the request against the standards in the ordinance and, and make a decision on approval or denial of that request. The second is that the request would go to city staff and we would review it and, and issue a decision, either an approval or to denial. Under that option, either an approval or a denial of the, of that license could then be appealed to the council. So if an applicant, if it was a denial and an applicant wanted to appeal, they could come before the council for that appeal. Or if neighbors or somebody else from the public didn't like the decision for an approval, that could also come to the council. The third option, which is staff's recommendation, is to limit the appeal, really to the applicant being able to appeal a staff denial of the request to make sure that that can come before the council and have a fair hearing and a final decision by you to make sure that it's been reviewed appropriately by the standards and not issued or reversed the decision. So we think that option is just more consistent with how we administer other land use and zoning approvals and licenses in the city. And we think it provides kind of a, a more consistent breakdown of kind of discretionary items are brought to the council, but those items that can be reviewed at an administrative level by staff are kept there. And then if there's an, an appeal process that's needed for a denial, that that could exist. So the draft ordinance that's in your packet is based on that third option, where only a denial by an applicant could come before you for an appeal. So with that, Mayor, I can answer any questions. And as I mentioned, Mr. Beatty's been involved in this as well.
Sure. I have a question. I don't see any lights yet. Well, I, my question is concerning number three, the way that it's written, the license application would be reviewed and approved or denied by city staff, and there would not be an appeal process to the city council. I think what you are saying is different in that if there was a denial, it would be a, it could be appealed to the city council. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct. The ordinance is drafted, the, the ordinance version that's in your packet is drafted based on a denial being able to be appealed to the, to the council.
One other point, too, that is not necessarily that I was making notes in my packet, is that the accommodation specialist would consult with the city attorney. That's one of the things that, when I was reading this, I thought, boy, that's putting a lot of responsibility on city staff, that I think that there should be consultation with the city attorney. And I'm glad to see that that is in, included in the amendment. And I know I did talk with Mr. Beatty. I'm going to ask you the question. Can you explain, my question to Mr. Beatty was, based on the way that this looks with the redlining, it looks like this is already in city ordinance and that the redlining is what we're being asked to review. But that I know now is not the case. I was confused about what this was. Mr. Beatty, do you want to explain that to everybody, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. That is a good point. The ordinance that is in your regular packet is the one I originally drafted. And the issue that I was wrestling with, that I think Mr. Thompson accurately described was, how much involvement does the council want? And when? Do you want this to be treated like a normal land use application where it comes before you and you look at it and approve it or not? Do you want to only have a review possibility at the end? And who should have the ability to appeal that? And this, this draft is based on sort of a mashup of the St. Paul and Minneapolis ordinances where they get a lot of these kinds of applications. And in my draft, I thought the council might want the ability to allow the applicant, as well as anybody living in the immediate neighborhood, to appeal it. And so that's the way it was written. Staff has decided that they think that's probably not a good idea. So the redlining that you see simply removes the ability of the neighbors to appeal, and it retains the ability of only the applicant to appeal. So that, that explains why it looks like an existing ordinance is being amended.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Councilmember Neblet.
Thank you, Mayor. You had some of the same questions that I had, actually. And I just have one other question concerning the fee. I just feel like to have a fee for someone asking for a reasonable accommodation has a chilling effect. And I know that we ask for fees for lots of things. I would prefer we didn't have a fee for a reasonable accommodation. And, and Mr. Thompson talked about incidents where people have asked to build a ramp or asked for a variance to build a ramp or for the housing situation where there are more than, I guess, five people living in a non-relationship establishment. But I'm sure that there are other things that will probably come up. And just the idea of, and in my mind, and this is just my thinking, thinking about somebody who needs a reasonable accommodation because of a major life activity may or may not be in a position to pay a fee. So is there an opportunity for fees to be waived?
Does anyone want to respond to that?
Certainly, Mayor and, and Council, I would say yes. I mean, it's in the ordinance that there could be a fee, but I think it's a policy discussion for the council that if, if you didn't want to include a fee to cover any sort of cost, that there could, there could be no fee associated with the, the request.
Okay. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Thompson, if we were to go with option three, are we still, are we still having to notify the other property owners adjacent to the property?
Mayor, members of the council, no. If there wasn't, if there is not an appeal for neighbors, we would not include that notification process.
Okay. I think that's good. I think, you know, as we think about people who are, are asking for reasonable accommodations, I don't think it's anybody's business what accommodations they may need. If I ask for an accommodation at work, I would expect that to remain confidential. And, you know, as a, as a person in recovery who knows the value of sober housing and the need for sober housing, to be coming into that situation and have my neighbors giving me a stink eye in that process would not be helpful. So I do think it's, it's important that we protect their privacy in that process.
Any other comments? Can someone, is there an established fee now or the, a fee has not been determined? It has not been determined? Okay.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I think what the ordinance says is we would establish a fee and that would be included in the city's general fee schedule for, for a future adoption.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no fee because we don't have a process. This is making up the process.
Thanks for that clarification. Councilmember Juneman.
In that vein, I love the weather girl voice. I won't be doing the weather, however. In that vein, do other places charge a fee for this that you know of? And if so, what's the range? And then this might be unnecessary to even say, but sometimes people associate no fee with unimportant.
Can you please repeat that?
Sometimes people associate no fee with, well, it's unimportant. The activity is unimportant. So, I mean, if that could possibly be true, then it would be a nominal fee, nothing that would distress anyone, but maybe assign it some significance. Just a thought.
Okay. City Manager Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would also add that it's a lot easier either to have a fee or not have a fee as opposed to having exceptions or saying, if you meet this whatever criteria, you wouldn't be charged. That's harder for us to do.
I can tell you my preference. My preference is number three, that this only comes to the council if there is a denial. That seems to make the most sense to me. And I also like that the review that's going to be done by staff will be done because this is really interpreting federal law and reasonable accommodation in consultation with the city attorney. I appreciate that. And, you know, I, the fees, as long as there is a nominal fee, if it's nominal, I, I don't really object to a nominal fee. It certainly shouldn't be anything that is oppressive or would be a discouragement to someone. But it is true, I certainly wouldn't agree with the idea that we can, that staff could waive fees because that just gets too hard to, we want to be fair, we want to be consistent. We want to acknowledge that there is staff time that is going into this. We don't want to discourage anyone from filing for a reasonable accommodation. And I think there may be some, some validity to that, that it, it may be viewed negatively if there isn't a fee, that it's not an important thing when in fact it is an important thing. So, any other thoughts, any councilmembers?
Can we, oh, sorry. Mayor.
Councilmember Neblet.
So when you talk, when you talk about nominal, what are you talking about? Because right now, each one of us are thinking of a different nominal. So, and I understand that this is something that staff will have to come up with, but...
I think we, we have our city clerk sitting over there. What would be, you, you're familiar with all of the, the charges for the different kinds of, of fees that we have? And what would be, you know, they, they range, I know, depending on what the service is because it does take staff time. So what would be on, give a, can you give us some examples of what would be like on the more nominal side of the fees?
Sure. Mayor and Council, right now, we have, as city, I'm sorry, CD Director Thompson said, there is one sober house right now that is being charged an annual fee under the lodging license. It's $124 a year. I would suggest that would be a nominal fee.
And that is for a business, is that correct?
That is right. Because in our, in our experience, a organization owns the house.
Okay.
It is not just somebody that's creating their own sober house. It is an organization that's owning the house. And so in this case, the organization pays that fee. They do have over five, and so it is a lodging establishment.
For the circumstance where it's an individual home and it is a ramp for access to the home, what might be considered a nominal fee if, if that ramp could not be built within our code and so we needed a, you know, an exception there?
Sure. You know, going back into the building world, because you're now talking about a ramp, a deck, that sort of thing, for them, a base fee is $146 if you're building a deck, in which that, in my world, that's where that would go.
And that is a one-time-only fee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, as opposed, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Neblet.
$140 for a deck that you want to have is not anything like a ramp that you need to have. $140 is not nominal. I, and I'm thinking about individuals. That's a lot of money for somebody who, very possibly, and I'm making this up in my head as we're talking, but what if this person doesn't work? What if this is the only way they can get in, get in and out of their house? It's a lot. It's just a lot. I'm done.
No. Mr. Love, do you have anything to weigh in on this?
No.
Nope, you don't.
Mayor and Council, I, I don't know if I have really a whole lot to add to this conversation at this point.
He sticks to the asphalt.
Okay, got it. Just looking for some, any other additional information? I think that, that we may need some further development on what these fees might be because, you know, when you're talking about a ramp, that's very different than, than a sober house. And so because these are so few in number, we've only had two, you came up with two examples, so it's not like this happens very frequently. And it's not like the next request for a reasonable accommodation might be something completely different. Mr. Thompson.
You know, Mayor and Council, the only thing I would offer is... You know, Mayor and council, the only thing I would offer is, you know, typically when I look at establishing fees, we look at what the cost is to just, to administer it. In a typical situation where we're reviewing something as simple as a reasonable accommodation with a ramp, it would be, you know, in my mind, an hour's worth of staff time at the tops. Now, consultation with the attorney may add to that. I think what we could do for flexibility is have the initial fee, which we are consulting with the attorney, be in the range of what Ms. Sin said. But the annual renewal, which is just a much more streamlined, could be at a significantly lower cost, just so it wasn't an ongoing annual fee.
City Manager Coleman.
In my experience with these kinds of things, the sober house is completely different. That does require a renewal. But if you're giving someone an exception to put in a ramp, or an elevator, or something else that would help them, you know, be able to use their home, that would not have a renewal. At least, that would be my understanding, and how I've used it in the past.
City Attorney Beatty.
Well, and, and going further on that, it was my concept that even with the sober house, it's not an annual license. I mean, we can, you can talk about that, but my idea was that that would be good so long as the application, as long as the, the building, the, the development was there.
Okay. City Councilmember Smith.
So, I'm getting a little confused. So, I, I see this as reasonable accommodation is around making an exception to some sort of code or ordinance that exists today. The fees we're talking about are for a building permit, or a lodging permit, or things that are normal licenses. So if, if anyone were to build a ramp for any reason, they would need to have a building permit. So, is the question the $146 for the building permit? Or is the question, is there a surcharge onto that to manage through the, the exception process for a reasonable accommodation? If it was $140 to manage through the exception process, I would be absolutely with, with Councilmember Neblet, that that is egregious and very expensive. The building permit is, is a different thing, and it covers inspections, and it makes sure it's safe, and typically is covered by the contractor as part of their bid, and works in a different process. I, I think the question from a fees perspective is how much more would you have to pay if you were asking for a reasonable accommodation? And is that zero? Is that $10? Is it, like, so I think, just to make this clear, because otherwise, there's a million, not a million, but there's many different kinds of licenses that we issue that may require some sort of exception or accommodation, and they're all at different prices, and we'll go down a rabbit hole if we try to figure out that entire fee structure.
Right. We don't, we certainly don't want to do that.
You know, if we, as a council, say, you know, if this is something that normally would require a permit of some kind, but we have to make an accommodation that it's the same cost, one way or the other, and if it's something that would normally not require a permit, then it's a $10 fee, or whatever. But to figure out, is there, what is that extra amount, if anything, if, for the accommodation part of the discussion?
You know, I'm going to suggest that we step back just a moment, because I don't want to come up with a fee schedule on the fly, and I don't want to put staff, you know, I have, people are looking at me like deer in the headlights, like, don't call on me. So, I, I think, let's take a step back, and staff can certainly come forward. Councilmembers, what do you think in terms of this particular proposal, this ordinance? Because the language, we, we could, I believe, move forward with it, because it talks about additional fees shall be charged in accordance. And I'm looking at page 29 of 29, so the additional fees aren't even set at this point. That's something we could ask staff to come back and report to us. But I think we need to kind of figure out, where is council in terms of this proposal? The, staff has outlined three different circumstances. I've indicated, I believe, number three is, I think, what I think is most suitable. Any other thoughts? Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Smith about being an incremental cost, not a core cost. And I think option three is the best.
Okay. Councilmember Juneman.
Three, and what he said.
Okay. So, I think we've got some clarity, and I think staff can relax, take a deep breath, and can come back with some thoughts about nominal fees. City Attorney Beatty.
Madam Mayor, actually, if you look at the draft ordinance, section G, fee, the sentence, the last sentence that was added, that's underlined, I think addresses that point exactly. It says, additional fees for any other required permit. In other words, if you require a building permit, that's what that's talking about. So it's already built in there. And so what it, when it talks about the general fee schedule, that's your already established fee schedule, so you don't have to do anything about that. The thing, the thing on top of that, that you're talking about, is, as Councilmember Smith said, should you be adding something on top of that? That's, I think, a discussion for another day, because you don't, you'd have to amend your fee schedule ordinance to do that, and that's not before you tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Are we satisfied with that, councilmembers? Okay, then with that, I will adjourn at 7:50. Councilmembers, there is someone who would like to-